Nothing, you know, just I'll give you that for today. So the North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to its virtual city council meeting. There are two public forums set aside for public comments. One at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. When I call upon you to speak, I request that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes and that you avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Mayor, yes, we are in compliance with the Open Meeting Law.
Thank you. Tonight we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Barone. All of that will have the Pledge of Allegiance as led by Councilwoman Goins Brown. Please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to recite the prayer for elected officials, but of course tailored for our city council meeting. O Heavenly Father, from whom all prayer comes, by whose divine will almost abide, we thank you for our civil liberties and freedom, for our opportunities and our privileges. We beg of you to bless, assist, and enlighten this city council. May we prove worthy of the confidence that people have placed in us by our fellow citizens. May we be just and unright in our thinking and honest in all our decisions. And may we ever be guided by a true conscience in the legislation that we will vote and propose upon tonight. Forgive us for our mistakes and for any selfish tendencies and help prepare us by our good deeds for an eternal union with you, Lord, or Christ and Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilwoman.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Council. Those are very important things that we still believe in in the city, I'll tell you. We are now going to move on to the public forum. This time is set aside to comment on posted agenda items. The public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items, which will be heard later. So if you want to speak on any items listed on our consent agenda, business, or ordinance final action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody who wants to speak on consent agenda businesses or ordinances at this time?
Mayor, I have 11 written comments that I will summarize for you and I have one caller on the line. So Mr. Troy from Airbnb stated that they support balanced regulations but expressed concern that some regulations may produce obstacles to short-term rentals. He listed separation requirements, registration requirements as two obstacles. And I had Annette Fiala from Vegas Vacation Rental Association spoke in support of short-term rental ordinances stating the association advocates for reasonable regulations and she asked staff to consider short-term rental certification classes to be required. And then Stephen Kraus, a local homeowner, stated that he felt the 660-foot rule violated his property owner rights and he questioned the fairness of the process if, for example, two applications came at the same time within the same radius and only one was approved. Tyler Kirages sent an email in support of short-term rentals stating it is an economic opportunity for residents and asking to have the 660-foot restriction removed and registration changed to 90 days. Paula Cabrillo, president of the Nevada Vacation Rental Professionals, sent in a letter of support for short-term rentals, asking for reasonable regulations, fees, education requirements, and licensing. Marinco Junkic sent in an email of support. He stated he has short-term rental properties in Henderson and that it's working well. He asked Council for a good screening process. Louis Gornick, founder of the Greater Las Vegas Short-Term Rental Association, committed staff for their dedication and hard work in crafting the proposed ordinances. He said the fee of $900 is too high and suggested a $300 fee. And he said the 660-foot separation would be more ideal if it was 100 or 200 feet. Ed Eulington in a letter of opposition to the proposed ordinance supporting the lack of an ordinance. He stated the proposed ordinance discourages home stays and damages the local industries. Min Ma Yang, an NLV resident, stated she lost her job due to COVID-19 and wants to do short-term rentals. She asked Council to reconsider how long one must demonstrate that they have ownership of the residence from a year to six or eight months. He also asked that the term for applying be extended from 60 to 90 days. Thomas Davis sent in an email regards to item 24, asking Council to allow new residents like himself to apply for a license, to remove the 660-foot restriction, and change registration time to 90 days. And lastly, Jim Egan, a local resident, sent an email in support of short-term rentals, stating regulations give owners an opportunity to become licensed and mitigates the problems with house parties. And then I have a caller, oh, the caller on the line is no longer here for his public forum, so that would be it, Mayor.
Thank you. That will all be noted and we'll put all that in a minute, those letters and those discussion points, so we appreciate that. We'll have people respond to some of those answers as we get to the item on the agenda. So I'm, since no one else is ready to speak at this time in any other items, I'm going to close the public forum and move on to the agenda.
Item one, approve city council regularly agenda as of October, agenda of October 21st, 2020. Mayor and Councilor, a few changes to this agenda. In the agreement for item seven, the prices per meal were reduced to $2.75 for breakfast meal, $4.50 for lunch meal, $4.50 for snack lunch, and $4.50 per dinner meal, savings of 25 cents for each meal provided. In the agenda report in the finance impact section for item nine, the correct address is 310 East Lake Mead. With these changes, it's our recommendation to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions on changes to the agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion as to approve as amended.
A move for approval of the agenda as amended, Councilman Black.
We have a motion. We'll do voice roll. All those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, yes. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you very much. Once again, Councilman Churchill is not on the phone this evening. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through 13. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended with a comment that I'm looking forward to more water savings for our thirsty world with the removal of turf at our alley on the golf course.
Very good notice, yeah. Okay, we have a motion. Once again, all those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, yes. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you very much. Items have been approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor and Council, item 14, approve AMP 08 2020 Cary and Revere Retail Building for applicant Aaron Lefton to request an amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from single-family medium to neighborhood commercial on property located at the northeast corner of Cary Avenue and Revere Street, APN 1391541006.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation on this right now?
I can give you a presentation if you would like. I wasn't planning on doing that. The applicant is just proposing to develop the property with a small commercial retail building that would have uses that would support the neighborhood in that area.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Goins, that's the end of your presentation. Ms. Goins Brown, let me open the public comment first. Is there anybody on the phone on public comment on this one?
Yes, Mayor Lee, I believe it might be the applicant or owner. Let me bring them into the meeting. Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Aaron Lefton, 15206 Ventura Boulevard, 6306 Sherman Oaks, California, 91403.
Thank you, welcome. Are you offering anything to the, are you offering something in the public hearing? Or just standing by to answer questions? Just standing by to answer questions? Okay, thank you very much. So that's the end of our public hearing on that. Councilwoman Goins Brown.
Yes, Mayor. I am in support of items 14 and 15 as they are related. I understand we did get some written comments on this item. We had nine that were in opposition. I'd just like to put on for the record that we've had two neighborhood meetings, one I believe was in July, July 15, where we had myself and the team on the phone. We had no neighbors in attendance on that meeting. Then we had another one on, I believe it was August 31st, where we did have a few neighbors in their surrounding areas participate in the call. Most concerned was the bunker on the northeast side of the development there. We, you know, had lengthy conversations about that development and what they could do to make sure that those neighbors cannot look directly into the commercial project and everything seemed to be well discussed and the neighbors that were on the call were happy. And also, Planning Commission unanimously approved the reclassification at their meeting on September 9th. And the main condition under that was number two, where there's 10 foot of landscape buffer, so there'll be double roads versus single roads, and that would just be for the homes on the north and the east side. So I am in support of 14 and those same comments will go for 15 as well.
Great, so that would be your testimony at 15 too.
Correct.
Counsel, is there any other comments or questions you might have on this? If not, I'll ask Ms. Goins Brown to make a motion. Is there any comments or questions? Ms. Goins Brown, would you like to make a motion now on 14?
Yes, I move that we approve item AMP 08 2020.
Thank you, we have a motion, Counsel. All those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Councilman Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Item's been approved. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, item 15, approve ZN 13 2020 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3044, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 1.22 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from an R1, single-family low-density district to PED slash PID planned unit development district, planned infill development district, ZN 13 2020 Cary and Revere Retail Building, consisting of one 8,304 square foot retail building for property located at the northeast corner of Cary Avenue and Revere Street, providing for other matters property related there too. No presentation, Councilwoman Goins Brown did a great job describing this item.
Thanks very much. We will now open this up for public hearing. Catherine, have we got anybody on the phone who would like to discuss this?
Mayor Lee, we have no one on the phone and no other written comments.
Thank you. Then we'll close public hearing and once again, Ms. Goins Brown.
Mayor, I'd just like to add that this is a small commercial retail space that is more designed for the neighborhood. It's not going to be a huge traffic development or walk-up like cafe style or office building. Just a place for the surrounding area to, for their enjoyment. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Ms. Goins Brown. All those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Items approved. Thank you very much.
Mayor and Council, item 16, approve AMP 09 2020 Martin Luther King and Coral Lee for applicant, LGI Homes Nevada LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from mixed-use commercial and mixed-use neighborhood to single-family medium on property located at the northwest corner of Martin L. King Boulevard and Coral Lee Avenue, APNs 13904311, 024, and 13904416004.
Thank you very much. This is a time for presentation if anybody wants to make a presentation. Is there anybody, Catherine, on the phone for this?
I believe the applicant or the representative is on the phone. Let me bring them in. Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, ma'am. Your Honor, members of the Council, my name is Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing LGI Homes. We are here with an amendment to the master plan and then I'll add a little bit about the zone change, which is the following item, item number 17, so I could just incorporate everything together. We have approximately 37 acres of property. It is south of Craig Road, off of Martin Luther King, Coral Lee, and Scott Robinson Boulevard. This is an infill piece of property. It is tucked away behind the shopping center that faces out on Craig Road. A few months ago, I came before you representing a multifamily development on half of that property. That escrow did not move forward and LGI Homes has come in to propose a development on the entire property and staff is recommending approval. By coming in with this development, it's approximately 243 homes that will be constructed here. We had a neighborhood meeting. Nobody showed up in support or opposition to the neighborhood meeting. We also went to the planning commission meeting and the planning commissioners unanimously recommended approval of both of these applications and we believe that this is a good fit in this area, which will help support the commercial uses that are along Craig Road. And this is another piece of infill property that can be fully developed and we're excited to move forward. So with that being said, I can answer any questions that you might have on both of this item and the following item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gronauer. I'm going to open up the public hearing now. Have we got any Madam City Clerk that wants to speak to us on a public hearing on this item?
We have no one on the line, but we did receive one public hearing notice back to us in support and none in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. That was the presentation for 16 and 17. I guess Ms. Goins Brown, we'll turn it over to you right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an infill piece and like Mr. Gronauer said, we didn't have anyone in attendance for the neighborhood meeting. And I'm just glad that this property has been vacant for years and years and years. So happy to see development on this land. So if there are no other questions, if there's any other questions from Council?
Any comments, questions who has? If not, she'd like to make a motion? No hearing then? Go ahead, ma'am.
If not, I'd just like to make a motion to approve item 16. No, I'm 16, sorry.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. And Counsel, any comments, questions? If not, the chair, if you've got the motion, we'll call for the roll. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Items approved. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, item 17, approve ZN 14 2020 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3045, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 36.94 plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas from a PED planned unit development district to an RCL, single-family compact lot residential district, ZN 14 2020 Martin Luther King and Coral Lee for property located at the northwest corner of Martin L. King Boulevard and Coral Lee Avenue and providing for other matters property related there too.
Thank you. We had a presentation on already, so Madam City Clerk, I'd like to open this for public hearing. Is anybody wanting to discuss this?
Mayor Lee, we do not have any callers. We have the same number of one support and none in opposition for this when we mailed out notices.
Thank you very much. So we'll close the public hearing on Ms. Goins Brown.
I'd echo the same comments for item 16 and 17.
Okay, would that be your motion?
Move to approve item 17.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous, item is approved.
Mayor and Council, item...
Thank you, sir.
Item 18, approve AMP 11 2020 Lamb and Tropical SEC for applicant RJJR Investments LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from community commercial to multifamily on property located at the southeast corner of Lamb Boulevard and Tropical Parkway, APN 12329301001.
Thank you very much. Catherine, I'm going to open up for presentations. Is there anybody here who would like to store, is anybody like to give a presentation on this?
Mayor, we have, yes, we just had a caller come in.
Caller, go ahead, please.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
Melissa Yuri, 1055 Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite 210, Henderson, 89014. On behalf of the applicant, good evening, Mayor and Council. We did provide to the city clerk and hopefully you're able to have it in front of you, just a brief presentation of the project. If you're able to go to that, the very first exhibit is an aerial just showing where the project location is, an oddly shaped triangular piece on the southeast corner of Lamb and Tropical. And just east of that is the Union Pacific Railroad and to the east of that is the Amazon warehouse, both Fanatics. And so this relates to item number 19, but our request is to rezone from the existing C1 to an R3 and to make a change to land use plan from the current community commercial to a multifamily residential. And the next two exhibits does show the existing land use as it is. There's also currently community commercial and C1 and C2 zoning on the, both the northwest and southwest corners of Tropical and Lamb. This site though, if you move on down to the fourth exhibit, it shows the current site conditions of the site as it stands. And if you look at the site in the very top left corner, there happens to be an aerial that shows the post above the site. And the photo immediately to the right of that, it's on Tropical looking towards the site. Lamb right there happens to be a bridge going over the UPR. It's about 20 to 25 feet above the existing site elevation. Unfortunately, where the bridge happens to end, it's about 53 from the intersection, so there's no safe access from the site from Lamb Boulevard, which means the only access to the site from Tropical. If you go to the bottom right corner, the second photo there shows just past the intersection looking down Tropical towards the site. To the north of the site is existing single-family. And so if a commercial center were to go in here, it would have to share the single access with the access to the single-family residential to the other side, which could certainly prove some issues for them. Right there, Tropical does narrow down to about 60 feet, although to the west of Lamb, it's 100 foot right of way. And then finally, in the bottom left corner, it's again just past the intersection, however, it's on Tropical looking towards Lamb. And again, you can see the bridge, you can see the intersection. And so again, if commercial were over there, rather large signage would be necessary. You almost can't even see the site because of the bridge. So as a commercial tenant, to go in there, one, I have to mix my traffic with the residents and then also I'd have to have some fairly large signage to even be seen compared to the other commercial sites on the other two corners where I have prime access off of Lamb and easy visibility. So we really feel that the commercial is much less feasible with the given existing development in the area. If you go to the next exhibit after that, we did do a concept for if commercial were to be built in there and you could fit about 51,000 square feet of commercial. We looked at the trip generation, that would create about 4,400 trips versus the proposed multifamily, which with what our current concept is on the next and final exhibit, it's for 207 three-story multifamily apartments and it would consist of one and two-bedroom homes. Trips provided from this would be about 563, so much less impact on the existing residential in the area. So this is really, really going to be a much better fit for those existing residents. In addition, the multifamily is appropriate here. Per the code, you would want to find the multifamily at the intersection of two major arterials. Lamb is 120 foot, Tropical on the other side of Lamb is 100 foot, very close to many employment centers, including Apex as well as, as previously mentioned, Amazon and Fanatics. This is also a nice infill piece, so this would be providing infill development as well as creating an efficient use of Lamb and providing a mix of housing. The next nearest apartment complexes are about two miles away, not close to Craig and Lamb to the south, or about 1.6 miles away if you go up to Roman Hospital closer to the VA Hospital. So for these reasons, we really feel that the multifamily is a much better fit for this location than the current commercial. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Counsel. Any comments or any questions at this point before I open the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, if I could have a couple of questions here to the representative for the applicant.
Okay.
Yes, so to kind of like to summarize, I guess your principal, the owner, developer, they chose to go with an apartment complex rather than a commercial building because A, of course, as you're coming down, if you're heading northward, and of course, I have a home just around the corner there near Tropical and Pecos, but if vehicles are coming over that bridge and then coming on the downslope, of course, you have very little room, especially if you have like a larger commercial vehicle, to come to complete stop and then make the right-hand turn? Was that one of the issues here?
Yes, because you don't have access on Lamb. The access would only be off of Tropical. So not just for commercial vehicles, but for customers coming in, residents in that single-family development immediately to the north of the site, that is one of their main access into their neighborhood, so they would have to deal with a lot of additional traffic and trips going into the site versus, you know, the much more compatible use of the multifamily, which brings the trip generation down. So, yeah, there's no room for a D cell lane there to be able to turn in off of Lamb. So the trucks and as well as any customers using it would have to flow down there and then turn onto Tropical and then into the commercial center and mix with the residents trying to get in and out of their subdivision.
Okay. Number two, had your principal chosen to go with a commercial type use, what might have been some possible commercial uses for that? And of course, this is merely speculative, right? Because of course, you know, there's a very, quite fairly a large range of commercial uses. But what might have been some of these commercial uses for that property? That, you know, and of course, you know, as a property owner, you do have the right to develop property based upon ordinances. What might have been some commercial additions there?
So if you actually go to the exhibit right east floor where it shows the concept for the site plan, there is a concept for commercial there. And one of the ideas was to be able, you know, what would be the maximum allowed by code, meeting code that commercially that could go in there? And you could see there's enough room for four fast food with drive-through pads in addition to about 51,000 square feet of inline retail. So all told, you're looking at almost 70,000 square feet, sorry, 62,000 square feet of retail that could go into this location. So that's a part of a big reason why the trip generation is so high. You would have potentially many customers coming in for the fast food pads as well as potentially whatever retail commercial uses may be in that inline center.
And so I would just like to point out that, of course, fast food, you know, the owner would have been well within their rights to apply for and be granted permission to build fast food pads in this area that, of course, would probably generate, not just generate traffic, but also would be generating substantial traffic probably into the later hours. Isn't that correct?
Yes, the C1 would allow for that use to be in, would allow for the restaurant with drive-through in that location. So yes, you could have requested that. Potentially, a convenience store could have been requested as well. So there are multiple commercial retail uses that could go into that location if it remains with the commercial zoning and use.
Okay. I think I understand. And so most definitely, you know, it's interesting because this is a remnant piece and I don't know, I'm not sure who the developer was who developed and constructed the buildings, the residential properties there to the immediate north of this. But had they acquired this whole piece, they might have, you know, gone ahead and built homes through this kind of a quirky little triangular spot. And, you know, we wouldn't, I guess we wouldn't even be having this conversation if that was the case. But, you know, since the other homes are there and it's a residential area to the north, I guess it does stand to reason that a residential area continuing to the south, but maybe slightly different flavor of residential, might be a fit, might be a good fit. Okay, thank you so very much. I appreciate this and I think I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one, but Council, any other questions on this? No, here none. I, it was made known to me in our conversation with you that, Melissa, that we have an easement or something, you've had to move the wall back a little bit off Lamb, and there's a certain area that we have easement, is that correct, the city's easement?
Correct. So we don't have the site plan review, but there is actually, there's two easements. So there's an easement along the east side of the property, it's a thirty-foot wide drainage easement. And on the concept plan, we're showing landscape, but there's also in between the proposed, you know, the concept here and then the Lamb Bridge, there's a little bit of a right-way easement in between the property boundary and the bridge.
So is that, the width of it and the length of it is the full length of your property, but the width of it, what is the width of that?
Um, so on the east side for the drainage is thirty feet.
No, 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 I'm fine with that one. The other one?
The other one.
On Lamb?
Looks like it is about sixteen feet.
So that's gonna be an unfinished piece of dirt out there when you get finished, correct?
Yeah, in between the bridge and the site.
Director Dale Dapper, are you on the phone right now?
Uh, this is Mike Hudson filling in for Dale.
Okay, I love that, Mike. Mike, it looks like we're gonna have a sliver there. What do we do on something like that? We don't want to leave it native, but can you, if you're not aware of the answer of this, I can get it from you later. Do you have any, any knowledge of this?
Um, not directly. I mean, from looking at it, I would assume that that was in place for, you know, bridge maintenance and maintenance activities revolving around the bridge for future. So obviously, we'd like to maintain that easement or right-of-way. As far as surface treatment, I mean, we may have some options, but it would be very limited because we still have to have vehicle access in there. But I will look into that and I will get back with you.
Just aesthetically, you know what I mean? It would mean a lot in that area to look a little bit more pretty than just the native dirt, so, well, I think that's good. And I, I guess the presentation was for eighteen and nineteen, it's the same situation here. So I'm gonna open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody, Catherine, that want to speak on this issue?
Um, Mayor, we have no callers on the line. We have no written comment. We do have public hearing notices. We got one back in support and seven in opposition. For eighteen and nineteen.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. I'm gonna turn this over to Councilman Barone.
Yeah, I would have been a little bit interested to see, to find out what exactly was the point of opposition. And unfortunately, when I was reading the point of opposition, it just, it only said that people were opposed with. But I'm not sure if they actually understood, you know, what the options are here, you know, with their future neighbors. And Mayor, one thing that still remains a constant in our area is the lack of affordable and quality housing. With, you know, I mean, people need quality housing, and they need it, you know, on major areas, on major thoroughfares, transportation. And of course, you know, a major arterial such as Lamb that also...
Um, I think we just got lost, dear.
Welcome to Google Meet. Enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key. Thank you. You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Press star six to unmute.
Not that long ago, we had issues with people parking in semi-trailers on there. And, you know, the residents, I think, were getting tired of listening to these vehicles rumbling late at night. And, you know, I know, I would be upset with that myself. Potentially, with the commercial development there, you'd have the same kind of issues with more traffic, with larger vehicles, probably people coming in all out at more inopportune hours. And I think that an apartment complex that's laid out in this kind of a pattern, that has, it appears to have good setbacks away from the railroad tracks, they're gonna be well soundproofed, there'll be a setback from the bridge. I think there's one of these things where it's a little niche, I think, that kind of makes sense. And again, I'm not sure exactly why there are people in opposition. But I think, looking back here, I think once they're in place, we'll probably find out that these will probably be less impactful than a high-volume commercial development that people seem to not always like in their backyard. You know, or on the other hand, they might like their neighbors here, with their associated dog park and little basketball court. So unless there's anyone else who wants to say anything, I'd like to make a motion to approve this ZN thirteen dash twenty twenty. I think that's the right one. I think, did I read the right one?
That's correct.
Yes. Oh, no, no, I said the wrong, that's the wrong one. It was a ZN dash, oh my gosh, where I lost it here. Oh, yeah, I think it's AMP dash eleven dash twenty twenty.
There you go, you got it. Council, we have a motion. Is there any of the comments or questions before we ask for a vote? Seeing none, then we'll accept the motion. All those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Your item's approved. Moving on to nineteen, we've already had the presentation, so Catherine?
Mayor, Council, I should still read the item into the record. Item nineteen, approve ZN sixteen twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty forty-seven, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eight-point-two-eight plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas, from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to an R3 multifamily residential district. ZN sixteen twenty twenty, Lamb and Tropical SEC for property located at the southeast corner of Lamb Boulevard and Tropical Parkway, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Catherine, do we have anybody on public hearing that'd like to speak on this item?
Mayor, we do not. We only have the applicant back on the line if you want to bring her back in.
Hello, Catherine, are you there?
We're, we lost it again.
Can anybody hear me?
You unmuted yourself.
Oh, yes.
Mayor, we do have the applicant online. Do you want to bring her back into the call so she can hear the vote, or?
Uh, I think we're fine. We'll just go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it over to Councilman Barone.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this associated measure here, VAC dash zero seven dash twenty twenty.
We have a motion. Any other comments or questions, Council? If not, that we have a motion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, aye.
Going Brown, yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, real quick, just for the record, that was actually item nineteen, which was ZN sixteen twenty twenty. Item twenty is approve VAC O seven twenty twenty, North Las Vegas Rail Facility for applicant pro-terminal operators LLC to vacate two roadway easements, driveways, and a utility easement on Lamont Street, and one roadway easement driveway on El Campo Grande, generally located south of El Campo Grande Avenue and east of Lamont Street, APEANS one-two-three-two-nine-eight-zero-one-zero-five-and-zero-zero-eight.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation on this, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, we do. Caller, state your...
Yes, Elena Ariano, GCW Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Conditions of approval, and we're in agreement. We'd appreciate your support.
Elena, I don't think the Council heard your name and address completely. I was just joining the conference. Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. Elena Ariano, GCW Engineering, fifteen fifty-five South Rainbow, representing the applicant in this matter. We have reviewed the conditions of staff and we're in agreement, and we'd appreciate your approval as well.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna open this up for public hearing, Catherine. Is anybody on the phone for public hearing?
Uh, Mayor, there is no one on the phone. We did send public hearing notices out. We had one in support, none in opposition.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn this over to Councilman Barone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think this time I'm just gonna say I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty.
We have a motion. Any other comments or questions? If not, we will vote. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Items approved. Moving on.
Mayor, Council, item twenty-one, approve VAC O eight twenty twenty, project Foghorn for applicant, Penn and Toney Development Company, Inc., to vacate one roadway easement driveway on Las Vegas Boulevard North, one roadway easement driveway on the southwest corner of Tonopah Avenue and Woodward Street, two roadway easement driveways on Woodward Street, and utility easements generally located east of Las Vegas Boulevard and north of Owen Streets, APEANS one-three-nine-two-three-four-two-zero-zero-three and zero-zero-seven-through-zero-one-zero.
Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation on this, Catherine? Anybody on the line for that?
We have no callers on the line and no written comments.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Hearing that no one is on the line to discuss, we'll close the public comment. Council, any comments or questions on this at this time? I'll turn this over to Councilman Barone. Hearing none, Councilman?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I'd like to make a motion to approve item twenty-one, which will be a momentous, I think, game changer for this area, and we look forward to the finished product. And with that, that's my motion.
We have a motion. Cheryl's got a motion now asking for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Lee, aye.
Barone, yes. Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Items approved. Moving on.
Mayor, Council, item twenty-two, approve ZN eleven twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty forty-two, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately two-point-three-seven plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas, from a C1 neighborhood commercial district to an R4 high-density residential district. ZN eleven twenty twenty, Sienna Centennial and North Fifth, for property located at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and North Fifth Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. Catherine, do we have anybody on the phone for presentation?
Uh, we have two callers, but I cannot ascertain which one's the applicant or public, but I'll bring the first caller in.
Eight-point-three-seven plus-five acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas.
Hello, caller, please state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Murphy, Director of Real Estate Development with Nevada Hand, two-eight-five East Warm Springs Road, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you, Ralph. Did you want to, you've got some noise in the background there, Ralph, but did you want to make a presentation on this, or just standing by to hear any comments?
Uh, Mayor, I'm standing by to answer any questions, should the Council have any.
Okay, thank you. Catherine, would you ask the other caller if they're wanting to get on a public hearing on this?
Yes, I will bring that caller in as well.
Hello, caller, state your name and address for the record.
John Gustafson, twelve-ten Hinson Street, Las Vegas, Nevada. We've reviewed the comments from staff and we're in concurrence.
Okay, thank you very much. So no one from the public, Catherine, that's it?
That's it, Mayor, and I have no written comments.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing, and I'm gonna turn this over to Councilman Black.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make the motion to approve item number twenty-two.
Council, any comments or questions? If not, we have a motion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Barone, aye. Black, yes.
Going Brown, yes.
Thanks very much. Lee was aye, forgot to say my name. It's unanimous, it's approved. Thank you.
Item twenty-three, approve ZN twelve twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty forty-three, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately nine-point-nine-three plus or minus acres in the zoning map of North Las Vegas, from a C1 neighborhood commercial district and an R4 high-density residential district to a C2 general commercial district. ZN twelve twenty twenty, Sienna Centennial North Fifth, for property located at the northwest corner of Centennial Parkway and North Fifth Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Catherine, do we have anybody on the phone that'd like to make a presentation on this?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Caller, state your name and address for the record, please. Looks like Mr. Gustafson hung up, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now, since no presentation is coming forth, I'm gonna open this up for public hearing. Catherine, is anybody else on the phone for the public hearing portion?
No, Mayor, we have no one else on the line.
Thank you. Then we will close the public hearing, and I will turn this over to Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I would like to make a motion to approve item number twenty-three.
Thank you. We have a motion. Any comments or questions? We have the motion. So we're gonna call for the vote. Lee, aye.
Barone, yes. Black, yes.
Going Brown, aye.
It's unanimous, it's passed and adopted. Moving on to twenty-four.
Mayor, Council, item twenty-four, approve ZOA O two twenty twenty and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty forty, an ordinance amending Title Seventeen in the municipal code, ZOA O two twenty twenty, relating to permitted uses to allow short-term rentals and providing for other matters property related thereto. And just real quickly, a presentation on it. Staff started working on this item back in October twenty nineteen. When we started looking at this, we estimated there was approximately three-hundred-and-fifty possible short-term rental operators within the city. We also, at the same time, researched other jurisdictions in the valley, see what they did. Coincidentally, only Henderson, Las Vegas, had ordinances related to short-term rental. We created a matrix of those regulations, and we started meeting with the industry. Our first meeting was in October of twenty nineteen last year, and we met again in February and August of this year. And one of the things that we told the industry is our goal was to maintain the residential neighborhoods as a residential neighborhood. We basically wanted to ensure that short-term rentals operated in a very quiet manner, not to disturb the neighborhood. We also, in looking at this, we are proposing, and we talked to the industry about this, that only the property owner may apply for a short-term rental. And that can either be a whole-house rental or a room rental, and it would be a conditional use permit. There was discussions of requiring a special use, but many of the people that were in the meeting did not want a special use. They wanted the conditional, and staff was supportive of that. We're also requiring that the property owners, part of their operation, send out a Good Neighbor brochure to all the property owners within two-hundred feet of the proposed short-term rental. And they would need to do that annually because property ownerships can change, and that they would do that as part of the renewal of their business license. We're proposing a six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation between the uses. That is consistent with various other uses within Title Seventeen, such as group homes, halfway homes, homes for transitional living, where we require six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation. And again, intent was not to have a proliferation of them in one area. We're also proposing noise monitoring equipment to be located outside in the common areas, and this is to keep the noise levels down and also to prohibit it from being used for parties, weddings, and other similar events. and also to prohibit it from being used for parties, weddings, and other similar events. We're requiring that the applicant also submit a self-inspection checklist and that that be notarized and submitted to us. And as part of that checklist, they're also required to indicate whether there's any HOA or CCNRs, anything that would prohibit them from actually using that, utilizing that type of use. And then again, as part of the business licensing portion of it, they are required to submit that they did install the noise monitoring equipment and that noise monitoring equipment needs to be recorded for at least 30 days so that if there's any issues, we can check it. And real quick on that, one of the things that came up is people were concerned that we're going to record conversations. And that's not the type of noise monitoring equipment we're looking at. We're really looking at equipment that record decibels to make sure they're staying within proper noise levels and they're not disturbing the neighbors. I'd also like to hit one on some of the questions that some of the people brought up is that they indicated that they would like to see the registration period more than 60 days. And I believe what they're doing is they're looking at our ordinance wrong. Anybody can apply at any time they want. It's not a 60-day window in which you can apply. What it is, is that within the first 60 days of adoption, we are allowing people to apply and it's part of the... Encourage those that are already operating out there to apply. The 660-foot separation would be waived during that first 60 days. It won't be waived after that. And also, within that first 60 days, the property owners need to demonstrate that they've owned that home for at least a year. And we did that purposely because what we didn't want is people catching wind of this proposed ordinance and then go out and start buying all these homes in the neighborhoods to try and avoid that 660-foot separation. So, we want them to demonstrate that they've owned the property for at least a year. And we've already actually had a case where we've known some people have bought homes next to one another thinking they were going to skirt around it. And so, that's intent, is not to have a whole bunch of homes in a row, but to maintain a separation. Otherwise, I think I addressed the comments that have been brought up. And I will have other comments to get to the Title V ordinance. And I'd like to thank Amy Michaelis on this. She did a great job working on researching this and assembling this order, organizing all the meetings and so she's committed on this.
Wonderful. I'm going to open this up to public hearing. Now, Catherine, do we have anybody that would like to speak on public hearing?
Mayor, we have several callers. I'll bring in the first person. Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Jim Egan. The address is 514 Rancho Del Norte.
Welcome, Jim. We're ready to listen to you.
Terrific. I have a property up there and I also belong to a short-term rental association. And we met last week with our members and we think that all your proposed ordinances and license requirements are excellent. And we thank you for compromising and working with our industry to make this happen so we can mitigate party houses and unlicensed operators.
That's wonderful. That's a great presentation, by the way. Thank you very much, Jim. We appreciate you for that. Councilman Black did a great job. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim. Jim, is that all you had to say? It seemed like you were done.
Well, I just... You guys are really busy and I don't want to take up all your time. And I'm just speaking on the behalf of a lot of people. And, you know, we think what you're doing is awesome. Keep going. What you're doing is perfect. We applaud it. We pass it.
Well, there you go. That's what we needed to hear. Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you so much. I'll hang up.
Catherine, have you got another satisfied customer, I hope?
Yeah. Mayor, we have three more callers. But I do ask that the callers who've already spoken would hang up because we do have a phone line limitation of three. So, I'll bring in the next caller. Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Davis, 2201 Dover Beach Circle, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89032.
Welcome, Tom... Is it Thomas, did you say?
Yes, Thomas Davis.
Welcome, Thomas. Go ahead and address it, Counsel. We'd love to hear from you.
Regarding part of the ordinance where it states that homeowners should demonstrate ownership of residence for at least one year in order to register within first 60 days, there are many new residents in North Las Vegas who own homes just two months and they are in financial health, in need of financial help. I suggest to shorten that period from one year to six or eight months. Also, extend registration from 60 to 90 days before the restrictions go into effect. Regarding 660-feet separation, many homeowners do it part-time. It cannot be compared to other businesses like a restaurant, for example, where it's open 24/7. Because some homeowners might get the license and rent a few times a year on their vacation, but it automatically prevents anybody else within 660 feet to get the license. And that might be a family in desperate need of income. That's why 660-feet restrictions should not be accepted. The reason it cannot be compared to other businesses, like, for example, in a restaurant, some people might get drunk and go outside, create some I M. And S T Rs are much, much safer. There are some that might be affected, but it cannot affect every single S T R. That's why 660-feet separation originally was suggested. For example, just in my place right now, there are a few construction people staying that employed by Sephora installed their solar panels in new distribution center in North Las Vegas. They just needed a stay and a homey place to stay, which hotels are not at this point. And there are no parties, no events. And that's why we should allow less than 660 feet because we giving place for people to live. That's helping with the economy and everything else. And that's very important. So, two most important points. This new residence should be allowed to register less than one year of residency and 660 feet is way, way too much. Because like I said, if somebody is going to get the license to rent their local room for a couple of times a year, maybe during their vacation, and somebody else who is in 300 or 400, he won't be able to get it. And that's maybe a family who just lost a job. So, those two important points I wanted to mention today.
Thank you very much. Mark, do you want to make note of those things and discuss them after we hear a couple of other callers and just at the same time answer all the questions?
Yes, Mayor. That's fine. I can do my best.
Okay. So, Thomas, we wrote your questions down. You'll get a response, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate you, too. Catherine, behind Thomas, who's next to speak to us?
Yes, Mayor. Caller, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Don Christensen, representing the Nevada Resort Association, 10,000 Charleston Boulevard.
Welcome, Don. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Lee and council members. On behalf of the association, we'd like to acknowledge the staff for the work they've put into this. And we'd like to thank in particular Mr. Jordan for the time he spent with us. We appreciate being part of the process and share your goals in creating a sound public policy that regulates short-term rental while preserving North Las Vegas neighborhoods. As you know, we've shared our thoughts on some of the items at the last city council meeting. As you consider this item today as well as the next item, item 27, we ask you to consider adding a mandatory review of the regulations six months from now and/or another year, or a year from now from adoption to allow any adjustments needed to ensure the ordinance is working as intended. And overall, we just look forward to continuing to be a part of the conversation and working with you and staff on this item as it continues to move forward.
Thank you, Don. I think you'll find we've addressed that, but we appreciate it. We wrote it down and we'll respond to that after the next caller, okay?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor? Hello, Mayor? Are you still there? Mayor, are you there?
Welcome to Google Meet. Enter the meeting... Thank you. You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Press star six to unmute. You unmuted yourself.
Mayor, the telephone line dropped. Are you still there?
Yes, I am now. I redialed back in. Do we have somebody else on public comment right now? Public hearing?
Mayor, yes, we do. I'll bring her in.
Person that lost contact? Or are the rest of the council still on?
I'm still here.
Councilman Black is still here.
Councilman Barone, I'm back.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, Catherine, we're ready again.
Ms. Davies, are you on the line?
Hello?
Yes.
Ah, yes.
Welcome, Ms. Davies.
6074 Gordon Creek Avenue in Las Vegas. I wanted to note that Jim, who spoke earlier, is, I think, was referring to the Nevada Vacation Rental Professionals Meeting. And we had a great discussion on your ordinance and had a lot of support for it because you've included some best practices in there that will help ensure that operators will be able to be registered and then will apply best practices that should make them more neighborhood-friendly. And so, we commend you. And also, as an educator, I've looked at ordinances throughout the country and this will be one that we'll use as an example of a successful ordinance. So, I wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
We support it.
I appreciate you coming and working with Councilman Black like you did. So, we're going to do it. Thank you very much, Ms. Davies. Appreciate your phone call. Catherine, is that the final caller?
No, we have one more caller.
Okay.
Someone muted you.
Mayor, that's the last caller.
Hello?
Mayor, I'll try to...
Catherine, are you there?
I'm still here, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Counselor, are you there?
Barone, here.
Okay. I guess we'll wait back there.
Mayor, I will attempt to bring the next caller in, but I think he's producing a lot of feedback when he joins the conference. So, I will try again. Hello, caller. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ed Yulin. My address is 3418 O'Nidaway. 3418 O'Nidaway, Las Vegas. When I approached the city a year ago to do an ordinance, I particularly took into account the following, that the unique features of North Las Vegas, that it's less...
She's still waiting for Catherine, I think.
Hello? Hello? Hello?
I can dial it again.
Is Councilman...
Here?
Oh, good, good, good. It works.
Should I start over?
Thank you. You're muted because a lot of people are on this call. Press star six to unmute. You unmuted yourself.
I understand she's dialing back in now. So, we'll wait a second, guys.
Yes, Mayor. We keep... The phone line keeps dropping and so, I'm not sure if Mr. Yulin is still there. Mr. Yulin, are you still there? We're going to have to call it again. I think that he is... Max.
Thank you. That PIN doesn't match a meeting that's ready to start soon. Enter the meeting PIN. Thank you. You're muted because a lot of people are on this call.
I wish it would do.
Press star six to unmute. Press star six to unmute.
Hello, Mayor? Are you still there?
You unmuted yourself.
Mayor, are you still there?
Yeah. And I know staff's been helping you behind the scenes. Are we okay now, Catherine?
Right now, it's just that whenever we join Mr. Yulin to the phone, it seems to drop for some reason. Would you like me to try and join him to the conference again?
I think let's do that one more time. And if not, then we'll have to continue on.
Okay. I'll try.
You are here.
Hello, caller. State your name for the record.
And my address...
Ed, welcome.
Oh, thank you. My address is 3418 O'Nidaway, Las Vegas. I approached the city of North Las Vegas a year ago, in October of last year, to request that you do an ordinance, a... An S T R ordinance, short-term rental ordinance. And particularly, the reason I approached North Las Vegas is because, for several reasons. Number one, it's less impacted by the hotel cartel than the neighboring jurisdictions. Number two, because its economy is up and coming because a new industry is moving in there and many new jobs are being created in the city. Number three, because the leadership of North Las Vegas understands small business and the importance of developing all private business. Number four, because most of the biggest Las Vegas events take place in North Las Vegas. And five, most important, because its residents can use extra spending money. I envisioned the residents of North Las Vegas becoming the richest in Nevada, traveling to all parts of the world to become the guests of their guests. I imagine 10,000, 50,000 residents of North Las Vegas hosting these visitors from all over the world. And then them traveling with their kids to all over the world to the guests that they were able to meet. Sending their children to learn languages abroad to benefit Las Vegas' overall industry. Influencing or boosting their career choices and watching proudly as their kids would be establishing their own unique business. To me, North Las Vegas would be the primary generator of the light of freedom and free enterprise that Las Vegas has represented to the entire world during the last 77 years that I have lived here in Clark County. In my bliss and naivete, however, I was completely unaware that North Las Vegas already has the best short-term rental law in the state of Nevada and maybe in the United States of America. With 400 small businesses, 350, according to what was said earlier in the meeting, 350 small entrepreneurs making an average of $30,000 per year without any negative incidents. None of these things that this ordinance supposedly... without any negative incidents, none of these things that this ordinance supposedly protects against have been reported in North Las Vegas. Without, also without mountains of regulations. This is the existing law, without no regulations, without government lobbyists and bureaucrats hovering around. I envisaged that North Las Vegas could pick up the slack that has developed in our tourism industry since 2007, when we had thirty-nine million visitors here to Las Vegas. That figure has only increased less than ten percent in the last thirteen years, which is one-tenth the growth of global tourism. The ordinance, we should be growing much faster. We should have eighty million tourists a year, and that could be achieved through residents cooperating with the tourist and with the tourist industry. The ordinance you are considering totally discourages home stays and damages the casino entertainment convention industry. It is mislabeled as an SDR ordinance. In fact, it is an anti-STR ordinance. The current non-ordinance is vastly superior and conforms to the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, and please refer back to the wonderful prayer that Isaac gave us at the beginning of the meeting. One of them, adopting the new anti-ORD, anti-STR ordinance will pin neighbor against neighbor and the city against its people. There are no, it's working in harmony today. Tomorrow, with this ordinance, going to be all these conflicts. And this is...
Okay, well, I got that, Ed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate that. We've got a safety ballot in this, we hope. So Catherine, is that the last of the public hearing?
That's the last of the callers, Mayor, yes.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, and I'm gonna turn this over to Councilman Black right now.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I may say a few things that are slightly redundant to what Director Jordan said, but I just wanted to put on the record that North Las Vegas staff has really worked diligently on this proposed short-term rental ordinance for the last year, and we hope so. Catherine, is that the last? Where's the feedback coming from?
I believe Mr. Euling is still on the phone.
Yeah, that's my fault. Sorry.
Oh, don't worry. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. The staff has been, in my opinion and through my observations, thoughtful, thorough. They've been dedicated to the process of creating a short-term rental ordinance that I think makes the most sense for North Las Vegas and its residents. The staff, Amy Michaels, Mark Jordan, they've studied other ordinances. They've obtained training and education. They've inquired with industry professionals. They've evaluated and gathered the industry best practices, like mentioned by one of the callers, Ms. Davies. They've also listened, and I started my involvement in this process in February of 2020. Mr. Jordan mentioned the many stakeholder meetings that were held at City Hall. We've had very robust conversations and discussions, and I will say that several of the elements that you find in the proposed ordinance before you today literally came out of those meetings as a result of the valuable discussions that we had. I also wanted to say that, in my opinion, the council and staff traded a priority for our short-term rental that achieved a few things. Number one, to protect the quality and integrity of North Las Vegas neighborhoods, ultimately preserving the original intent of a single-family and multifamily-zoned residential area so we can have our residents live in a safe, peaceful, and quiet neighborhood. Number two, to create opportunities for small business entrepreneurs within our city limits by creating an ordinance that allows the legal use of single-family and certain multifamily properties for short-term rental and/or vacation use. And then lastly, I think the ordinance's goal was to support short-term rental operators' efforts to be successful, to be compliant, and ultimately to be good neighbors within the neighborhoods that they're permitted to be licensed and operate. There's one thing I want to say that we did not intend and do not want to do with our ordinance, which is to create large concentrations or pockets of short-term rental properties within our zoned residential areas, which would result in mini-hotel or mini-motel districts within these neighborhoods, causing disruptions to our residents. You know, we've heard a wide variety of opinions, opinions on the short-term rental industry in general, and of course, for us specifically, really vary widely, depending on who you ask. Some of residents that I've spoken with and some of my colleagues on the council I've spoken with, one hundred percent oppose any short-term rental. They think they should be banned. They think they're party homes. They think they're terrible. Some residents are in favor. Some industry groups that we've talked to are supporting this ordinance as presented. Some are supporting it with some suggested changes. Some are in opposition, and for some groups that we've interacted with, to them, the best ordinance is absolutely no ordinance at all. I think our city's taken a balanced approach to look at our current set of circumstances, and I think we've created an ordinance that is organized and structured and creates opportunities, not only to keep our neighborhoods safe and what they're intended for, but also for legal entrepreneurship and small business. I really am impressed. I've watched this and participated for the last, you know, eight months, and I'm so amazed at the way our staff has come together. It was Amy Michaels and Mark Jordan at the lead, but we had code enforcement. We had business license. We had the traffic division, our police department, our legal department, our upper-level management. Everyone was at the table. We listened. We met with stakeholders. We discussed. We disagreed. We agreed, and ultimately, we compromised, and that's what brought us here today. I think we have a really great ordinance that is before us, and it's a wonderful, wonderful starting point to embrace this emerging and growing market and industry.
Okay. Councilman, stay close to your phone there. Director Jordan, we had Thomas and a bunch of people ask questions about different dollar amounts and time limits, stuff like that. I know we've got a six-month review in on this. Did you want to comment on any of those questions that maybe they had?
Yes, Mayor, I can comment a little bit on it, you know. First, starting with the last caller. He indicated that, you know, he likes what we currently have on, in place right now. But the thing is, we don't have anything in place right now. The zoning ordinance is more of a permissive-type ordinance. It's basically lists what is allowed in the city, and if it's not listed, then typically, it's not an allowed use. And so in this particular case, we don't have any type of criteria for short-term rentals. So as Councilman Black was saying, by adopting ordinances, we're bringing in some provisions that would allow the entrepreneurship of people to be able to run these businesses and also to make these businesses legal in our city. One of the callers indicated that they did not like the requirement of proving that they've owned the home for at least a year. And again, the reason why we put that requirement in there is that for the first sixty days, people can apply for a conditional use permit, and they're not subject to the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation. And what we didn't want is that when the industry knew we were creating these ordinances, for them to go out and start buying homes to be able to apply within that sixty days and avoid the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation, thereby creating possibly Hotel Row or pockets of homes that could be a quasi-hotel area, which is something that, from what I get, the Nevada Resorts Association was concerned with as well. We were also concerned too, and we stated this at the very beginning of all these meetings, that in a sense, our prime directive has always been to protect the residential neighborhoods. As Councilman Black indicated, that we recognize that people buy the American dream. They want to raise their families. They don't want traffic. They don't want people running businesses out of their home. And in many ways, we want short-term rentals to operate the same way that homeowners operate at a home, basically in a manner that nobody even knows that a business is going on in the home. And so that's why we propose the separations. That's why we propose a sixty-day requirement so that people could find an incentive to come and apply with us to avoid the six-sixty. But after that, we would start looking for that six-sixty separation. I should note that there is a provision in the ordinance that a person can't ask for a waiver of that six-sixty separation if there's an adequate barrier in place. And that adequate barrier can be things like I-15, II-15, a major commercial center, a park, something that actually separates two short-term rentals because of a major obstacle in place. And so that's something somebody could ask. And then they've indicated that they would like, instead of sixty days, a ninety-day timeframe in which they can file. Again, we proposed the sixty days for people to encourage those that are operating to file within that sixty-day period. But then after that, if somebody wants to file and they can still meet all their criteria, they are still welcome to file at that point. I believe I addressed all the concerns that were raised.
Well, there were some, there was a couple of questions on how did you guys come up with your fees? That was a question.
The fee we came up with is that, in the discussions with those that were part of the industry working group, we originally looked at a special use permit, and the fee for a special use permit is a thousand dollars. But because they didn't want to apply for the special use permit, they want it to be a conditional, and we supported that, but we decided we wanted to keep the fee of nine hundred dollars. It's basically the first, the initial application, it's a hundred dollars for the conditional use permit and nine hundred dollars for the business license application or fee. And then it's nine hundred dollars annually thereafter. And that's based on a thousand-dollar special use fee. And I should note that some of our research that we've done, on average, most short-term rentals, on average, again, make about thirty-six thousand dollars a year in short-term rental. And in some cases, Henderson has experienced that, that they have a few short-term rentals that can actually make up to eighteen thousand dollars a month. So we didn't believe the fee was too absorbent, and that's how we came up with that fee.
Okay, thank you. I think you've addressed all the questions that I wrote down too. Council, we've heard from Councilman Black and the hard effort work that he put in us, but before we go any further, do we have any other comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I mostly can, I guess, you know, Councilman Black, you know, he said about everything. To me, the most important thing, just I, as a young father, of course, I grew up in North Las Vegas, but when it came time, you know, when I was very young, in my early twenties, when it came time to actually to buy into the American dream, I was able to do it because there was supply of affordable houses in North Las Vegas. And the one thing that, you know, I think that builds our community. Our community is best served when we have people who are willing to not only invest, but they raise their families right in our neighborhoods and become, you know, staked-in members of our neighborhood. And the last thing I think that we need, and I could be wrong, but I think most of our neighbors will agree, what we want, we want to make sure that, you know, that this still kind of a small-time feeling in many parts of our community is still preserved. And is short-term rental, is it actually happening right now? We think it is. As a matter of fact, you know, it's been, right here in Ward One, in the downtown area, we've had reports of small four-pluses that have been cleared out already by the owners in anticipation of being able to offer short-term rental, which of course is potentially way more lucrative than it would be to rent, you know, a one-bedroom or two-bedroom small apartment to a rather humble family. You can easily double or even triple, you know, your potential earnings. Now, it's not that we're getting in the way of people who are trying to make money. What we're trying to do is preserve our communities and preserve North Las Vegas as a place that people can still find quality, affordable homes to raise families in. And in the long run, this kind of investment and allowing people to build a home, whether it's a rented home or a home that you purchased and be able to live out of it, that's gonna serve us a lot more rather than money going into the gig economy. With that being said, of course, we, this is still an attempt to allow, that the need to relieve out of allowing some small entrepreneurs to definitely enter the economy. For instance, maybe a couple who, they're empty netgers and they have a room or two that they can rent out, a converted garage, they can rent out again to supplement their income. And I think this is a fantastic middle ground. Always in negotiation in these things, you try to find the halfway point where maybe not everyone gets what they want, but everyone can get what they need. And I think this is a legitimate attempt to give everybody what they need, and with the ability to go back, you know, in a few months and check out how it is. If we need to make some adjustments, we can always do that. And I also want to applaud the efforts by our team. Our staff have put in a lot of hard work and did such great research, and we're able to reach out to other surrounding communities to see what they're doing, to craft something that fits, and it may not be perfect for everybody, but it fits for North Las Vegas.
Great, thank you very much. We've got, Councilman Churchill could not be here this evening, but he sent a message in to the city manager.
This is a message I wanted to read from Councilman Churchill, who had to be out of town on an urgent matter. It's unfortunate that I cannot be at tonight's meeting, but my vote would be in favor of this short-term rental ordinance. After extensive research and many conversations with stakeholders and staff, I am confident with the balanced approach that's been proposed. This measure is a result of lots of collaboration so the community could have a say, which is what our job is as elected officials. I understand that some folks may still have some concerns, but please rest assured, we will continue to monitor how it is working and see if any adjustments are needed. Thank you to Councilman Black, our fantastic city staff, our tremendously awesome city manager. I'm kidding, I added that part. Our fantastic city staff and all the other stakeholders who worked on this with us to create a very reasonable policy for the city.
Thank you very much. I've got just a couple of comments. Are there any other comments from the council? I think Pam and we only missed you. Are you okay on everything?
I am okay, Mayor, and I'd just like to add, you know, just thank you to staff who have, you know, who spent many hours and months and years working on this ordinance. And just as I read in one of the comments, it said like the best kept short-term rental is one that you don't know that's there. I think those that have always followed the rules will continue to do that, and this is just another safeguard to protect our neighborhoods and to protect our city.
Thank you very much. And I'll end on this. We're not trying to encourage people to buy numerous homes in North Las Vegas. We're trying to have a way there's a supplemental income that could be had. Also, the conversation of, we will be having a lot of construction workers who will be working on a lot of these projects, and they're specialty contractors. They'll come in, and I think, I think it was Thomas who mentioned that. We're not trying to compete with local businesses, but there are times when it is a little bit better of a deal for someone to do a short-term rental with this organization than to find a hotel that's totally full and they have to go all the way up into the strip or somewhere. So we want to make construction and jobs available to people close by where they're working. Why I said that wrong? We want to make sure that where people are sleeping, they're near the job sites. And then the last thing, Councilman Black, I know you put in some triggers here. We're asking, and I guess as a council, we'd like you to set up a six-month review right now. Get ready for it, figure out the calendar where it ought to be. Remember who the interested parties are and have them report back to you and have a meeting. And if you would report back to the council in a council meeting, we would appreciate that. Are you okay with that, Councilman?
I absolutely will. I think that's a great thing that we'll do. We'll know how successful we are. We'll know the things that we may need to address down the road, and I think that's a perfect plan, and I'll definitely play that part.
Thank you very much. Well, Councilman, I'm gonna ask you if you'd like to finish and make a motion.
I would. First of all, I just wanted to tell you how fortunate I feel like I've been. It's been fascinating. It's been fulfilling to be watching the formation from the ground up, if you will, a policy and ordinance that considered many facets, many factors, many viewpoints, and watch it take shape. Again, I just wanted to say thanks to our amazing team, Amy Michaels, Mark Jordan, Mary Aldaba, and all the people from the different departments that played a role in this. It's been a really, really a favorable experience to see the hard work that goes into keeping North Las Vegas heading in the right direction and taking care of the residents that we're responsible to provide services and safety for. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve ZOA 022020, passing the ordinance number 3040.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion. Council, we have a motion. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Lee, aye.
Brown, aye. Black, aye.
Goins Brown, aye.
It's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to business.
Item number twenty-five. Renewal of excessive liability insurance coverage proposal from Triton, Ardenad, Brookridge, through Alliant Insurance Services, an amount not to exceed three hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the period of November one, twenty-twenty, through October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, an authorized purchase order to Alliant Insurance Services for the amount not to exceed three hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred ninety-four, six, thousand, six hundred and one dollars for the city's excess liability insurance.
Thank you. The chair liked to call for a motion to renew the coverage and authorize this purchase order. Do we have a motion?
Goins Brown, move to approve.
Got it, Ms. Goins Brown, thank you very much. Um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Brown, aye. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, thank you very much.
Item number twenty-six. Renew, renewal of a, access workers' compensation insurance coverage proposal with Safe, Safety National Cash incorporation brokerage through Alliant Insurance Services, an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars for the period of November one, twenty-twenty, through October thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, an authorized purchase order for Alliant Insurance Services, an amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars for the city's excess workers' compensation insurance.
Thank you. The chair asked for a motion to renew the coverage and authorize a purchase order.
Goins Brown, move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Lee, aye.
Brown, yes. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to ordinance, this final action.
Mayor, council, item twenty-seven. Pass an adopt ordinance number thirty forty-one. Amending Title V of the municipal code related to business licenses generally to include provisions for short-term rental and providing for the other matters properly related thereto. And of course, this is the second component of ordinance thirty forty that amended Title Seventeen and this is amending Title V. This is where we're adding in the, the applica-, uh, the license fee and also some checklist, notarized requirements that a person would need to submit when they file for a business license. And all these requirements are consistent with what was proposed in Title Seventeen. However, I do need to read in a, an amendment to the record and this would be under Section Two, specifically for five point oh-two-two-seven-oh. And this is the six items that are listed under short-term rental and it's just a clarification. And item one would read notarized self-inspection checklist. Item two would read notarized affidavit demonstrating insulation of required outdoor noise monitoring equipment. Item three, notarized affidavit demonstrating compliance with notification of property owners and Associated Homeowners Association, our community management company, within two hundred feet of the short-term rental. Item four, notarized affidavit verifying that city business license number has been provided to all online platforms where short-term rental is listed. Item five, certificate of insurance with general liability coverage of not less than five hundred thousand. And item six, short-term rental hold harmless acknowledgement agreement. That's, uh, all the amendments I need to read into the record.
Thank you very much. So at this time, the chair is gonna look for a motion to amend and adopt ordinance number three oh four one. Chair, get that motion.
I'd like to make a motion to pass an adopt ordinance three zero four one. This is Councilman Black.
And amended, yes, okay, thank you very much. We have a motion, all those in favor. Uh, Lee, aye.
Brown, yes.
Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to appointments.
Item number twenty-eight. Appoint two, two, two members of the Regional Transportation Commission in Southern Nevada Bus Shelter in San Jose, San Diego City for a one-year term ending November one, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. We have, uh, Richard Skipton, who has been on this board and done a very good job for us and we appreciate his efforts, has asked to be reappointed. And we have a new member, Vincent Richardson, uh, highly capable and very excited about supporting, uh, a board for North Las Vegas and making, uh, North Las Vegas a better place when it comes to transportation issues in North Las Vegas. So that will be my motion, um, to accept those two people and reappoint them. Um, Lee, aye.
Brown, yes. Black, yes.
Goins Brown, yes.
Thank you very much, items approved.
Item number twenty-nine. Appoint a citizen member to serve as the Incorporated Cities Representative of the Board of Supervisors of the Conserv-, Conservation District of Southern Nevada for term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. Once again, we have a wonderful person, Chris McGee, who loves being on that board, has asked to be reappointed, so that will be in my motion to reappoint Chris McGee. Um, that's the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Brown, aye. Black, aye.
Goins Brown, yes.
We got it, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, council, just one little item and I think you're all gonna love it is this is the, uh, last, uh, virtual meeting, hopefully for a while. Um, but we will be going back into, uh, normal meetings in chambers, uh, uh, starting our next council meeting. We will still have virtual options available for members of the public that, uh, are unable to come or feel unsafe coming. Uh, I just wanna really thank, um, the, our clerk, Catherine's done a tremendous job. I know that psychology has a way of, of not working when you want it to work sometimes and she's been dealt with those issues and the, you know, the weird little echo thing we get sometimes and I just wanna thank her and her team for navigating us through this, this time as we have these virtual meetings. Um, also wanna thank, uh, our IT directors, Dennis Moriarty and Ken Todd in ITU, who've been down there working, uh, behind the scenes throughout these meetings. Every time there's a, oh crud, something's happening moment, they're jumping on it. Um, and, uh, our ACM, uh, Malesio, who's down there also working with the team to make sure that these meetings can, can be accessible to the public and, and can get their, their participation as we continue the, uh, the business of the city even throughout the pandemic and that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good report, it'd be good to be see each other again and do the business for the public to come in and be with us. Um, moving on to public forum, now is the time to set aside and speak on i-issues, not on the agenda. These will be issues, speakers are limited to three minutes. We can hear those, uh, items and issues, but we can't take any action raised upon it during the public forum. And city clerk, are there any callers or written comments waiting for response?
Mayor, yes, we have, uh, Mr. Yuling on the line again. I'll try to figure in the conference. Hello, Mr. Yuling, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Ed Yuling, uh, thirty-four eighteen, O'Naito Way. Yeah, um, uh, Las Vegas. Um, uh, what, uh, there are a couple of things. Um, there's going to be a review of the ordinance, uh, SPR ordinance in six months. What are the criteria going to be for that review? Uh, uh, how do we find, uh, how do we find out what they are? And it's so ironic that North Las Vegas would adopt such an anti-entrepreneur law when the city has established a, a whole, um, a whole program to encourage entrepreneurism. And I'd be curious to know, how many, uh, businesses have been established since that program was established? The, uh, there were three thou-, three hundred and fifty, uh, small entrepreneurs hosting people in their homes. Uh, how, uh, how many are going to be left in six months? How many, uh, it, it, that's one thing. How, uh, uh, I think, I was, I thought, I envisioned that ten thousand residents of North Las Vegas could be hosting visitors. And instead of having twelve billion dollars flow into the city, four hundred million dollars could flow in the city. And that's just the beginning of what could be done in the city of North Las Vegas, which isn't so tied and so, uh, um, so manipulated by the, uh, hotel cartel. There, uh, so anyway, um, what has been the result of your entrepreneur program? And why are you establishing such an anti, uh, entrepreneur, uh, and, uh, law? Which, by the way, our constitution, the whole concept of the United States of America is not that you have to be permitted to do something, it's that you have to be, uh, uh, you have to be prohibited from doing something. Uh, the government does not have the right under the Fourth Amendment to dictate every little thing that goes on in a person's house. People are normally, uh, uh, normally, uh, uh, free to invite whoever they want to their house, charge them zero or charge them ten thousand. Uh, what difference does it make? They are, they're free to have a dog in their house. They don't need to get a permit from the government. They're, they're free to have a gun in their house. They don't have to get, uh, go down to the ci-, uh, uh, city clerk and get a permit to have it in their house. Uh, the, the, the whole concept of this, e- everything was so fine and if it only been advertised, it could've been fabulous. And now it's going to become a, a total disaster. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed, have a good evening. Um, Catherine, have we got anybody else who would like to speak at this time?
Mayor, we do not.
We will close the public forum. Thank everyone for this meeting, it was a little bit long, but we covered a lot of ground. This meeting is adjourned.